Meeting call to order. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Please stand for a silent prayer, a moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Star Ledger on January 3rd, 2023, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We're now on to special event applications.
So, Lisa's absence tonight, the only special event application is a polar bear plunge scheduled for December 30th. We've been doing it for 35 years plus.
Thank you. Any questions? We're now on to presentations. Up first, I have a presentation by Mercy Center for redevelopment of 1100.
Lisa, we're gonna do the auditor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Apologize. We have a presentation by David Gannon of PFK O'Connor-Dadees, the 2022 Municipal Audit Report, and our CFO, Joanne Booth.
Good evening, everybody. So we have issued our audit to Divisional Economic Services in accordance with the deadline for the year. I would tell you, we did not take any exceptions to any accounting practices that the city is following. We've done the cities following all the requirements that have been promulgated by the Divisional Economic Services of New Jersey. Overall, we found the financial records maintained by the city and the Office of the Finance Officer, Ms. Booth, and our staff are in excellent condition. We think, you know, they do a really fantastic job of maintaining those records. Overall, the city's financial health is very good. The fund balances within current funds and especially the three utilities are strong. Overall, tax rate collection percentage continues to be over 99%. This year, topping out at 99.93%. Overall, the city's debt load is fairly low considering. Net debt's $25 million, or 1.114%, where 3.5% is the maximum. So you're significantly under that. Overall, your borrowing power that remains is $53.9 million. Not that I'm suggesting that you take that much debt out, but just to give you an idea as to what you're permitted to have versus what you do have. Additionally, we were required to perform a federal single audit based on the level of expenditures of federal awards. We issued an unmodified opinion on compliance, so no exceptions there. During the course of our audit, we did find two items where we suggested to management take corrective action. Those items aren't significant, but they're fairly housekeeping in factor one. Unconforming orders is very standard. It happens a lot in most municipalities in the state. The other one regarding reconciliation of certain transportation revenues. Actually, I said that with Ms. Booth a little bit earlier than today, and she's actually already corrected that as of now. And again, those aren't items that are significant. They're not material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. And there's other items for improvement to the city's office to take corrective action on, of which already ones have been taken. With that, the questions will be more than happy to answer. I talked to you before I asked my questions. You answered, and I appreciate it. Does anybody else have any questions?
The parking ones come up before, so that's resolved.
Yes, that's resolved.
Yeah, so it came up last year as well, and to be truthful, it took some time for the finance office to actually figure out what was happening. The vendor wasn't overly knowledgeable or cooperative in the process. So the actual reconciliation process that Ms. Booth has to go through every month is actually pretty extensive to actually reconcile the ins and the outs and some of the delays and when it gets transmitted and deposited. So it took some time to figure out, and then at this point, the process is down.
Yeah, it's all taken care of.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Joanne, thank you for doing a great job over your wall.
Thank you, Joanne.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're now onto a presentation by Mercy Center for redevelopment of 1100 to 1110 Main Street for a food pantry, cafe, administrative offices, and accessory parking.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and ladies and gentlemen of the council.
I think that's gonna say a few words first, and then you can jump on. This is just a very formal.
I'm just really anxious.
This isn't like a planning session.
All right, thank you. Good evening, folks. My name is Beth McManus. I'm the city's planning consultant. I'm just gonna introduce this project very quickly. Tonight, we have a presentation by the Mercy Center to talk about a redevelopment proposal. The Mercy Center, for those of you that may not know, is located on Main Street, at the corner of Main Street and Third Avenue, at 1100 to 1110 Main Street. The proposal is to, and all, there'll be much more detail during the presentation, but simply it's to redevelop the site, remove the existing buildings, replace them with a new operation for Mercy Center that includes the food pantry, as well as some additional uses. The site is in an existing redevelopment area referred to as the Main Street Redevelopment Area with the Main Street Redevelopment Plan. The purpose of tonight's presentation is for Mercy Center to provide information to the public and also to the council about what is proposed, and to also give the public an opportunity to make any commentary, ask questions that you might like. But I do want to note that the opportunity for public comment will be at the time of public participation on the council's agenda, which will follow this presentation, as well as a couple of presentations. And so it's listed on the agenda, but I would ask that folks wait just a little bit until they have an opportunity to provide any comments. And so with that, I'm gonna turn things over to the Mercy Center for their presentation.
Well, thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, good evening. My name is Kevin Kennedy. I'm an attorney in Red Bank, and I'm very proud to be here tonight on behalf of the Mercy Center. The Mercy Center is a wonderful organization, and as Beth just indicated, we are here ultimately seeking, the beginning process, ultimately seeking an amendment to the Main Street Redevelopment Plan. Sort of a nuanced process. We have existed here for a long time. We predated the redevelopment plan. We have variance approval, prior variance approval from the zoning board. But we're here tonight to explain the process. And in a nutshell, in our opinion, the mission, our mission statement for our organization is noble. The services we perform are life-affirming. The employees and representatives that work on our behalf, starting from the Sisters of Mercy and down, they're amazing. The recipients of our services are wonderful people as well. The one thing in our life that is lacking is the facilities. And not just lacking a little, we're lacking a lot. And that's what's driving this. And with that, I'd like to turn it over. I know our schedule, our timing is brief. This is Kim Godana. She is the executive director of the Mercy Center, and I'll turn it over to my friend.
Thank you, Kevin. Council mayor, councilwoman, good to see you. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm gonna stand over here, and if you can't hear me, please let me know. I'm gonna start with what we have, and that is the current buildings. These are the three buildings on Main Street. We also have a proper parking lot. There is my arrow. A parking lot here on the left at 1108, and a parking lot right here at the corner of Third and Main. We bought the first piece of property in 1986, Sisters of Mercy through Sister Carol Henry. The property was purchased renovated. We bought three buildings over a period of time. In 1999, as Kevin mentioned, we got a variance to operate a pantry out of this building where the pantry is today. Basically, let me describe quickly what these buildings are. This is the Family Resource Center, and I'll talk about what they do in a minute, but I will note that Veronica Gilbert Tyson is in the room, and she can speak for herself. I've learned a long time ago not to speak for Veronica, but she does fabulous work at the Family Resource Center. This is a one-floor building that services people. This is a standalone building in an empty alley. This building right here on the first floor is where we accept people into the pantry. They are processed, they stand out of the cold if they possibly can. And then upstairs, there are offices where our advocates and our licensed social workers now work. And then again, another alley, a separate building. And on the first floor is a pantry, and on the second floor, to get to the second floor, there is a set of stairs, and there's a conference room upstairs. Today, today, the pantry, sorry. Let me show you the site plan. Just to put you in, give you some idea of where we are, this is our bar right here. This is the old dry cleaner right here that's presently vacant. This is the Hurley Building that just went up for sale. I called the Hurley Building. I'm sure you have other names for it. And then this is the Dollar Store. This is our property. This is Family Resource Center, a single-story. This is a two-story middle building. That's the first one we bought, and then this is a two-story pantry. And then right here is the closest house to us, our neighbors, and they're in the room tonight. And in the back is some backyard office space. We also have right here, you can't really see it, is some park space. So what we're hoping to do is knock down these three buildings because, first, it's practically speaking, we should all be under one roof. Second, the buildings themselves are no longer safe, and I'll go through that in a minute. But most importantly, it's because of the volume of the people we've begun to serve. I have put up here, the number of people we have served in our pantry from just January to September of this past year is nothing short of astronomical. We've done 1.3 million pounds of food and essential items. In other words, we've distributed that much out into the community, which translates into about a million meals. We will serve, as of the end of September, we serve 66,367 people, mostly from the Asbury Park area. Most of them walk. By the end of last month, last month, we served 9,541 people in our pantry. So we're looking at about 76. I think we're on track to serve about 80,000 people by the end of the year. That compares, and I'll show you this in a minute, to 1,500 people we served three years ago. We had just in that time period, January to September, 4,177 new clients. They sign in, they make representations as to their economic status, and agree to follow the rules, which is only going once a week in shock for your family, your own family. That's 4,000 new people in the pantry just since January. Last month, we had 541 new people in the pantry. We've served, we reclaimed from local retailers about 211,000 pounds of food waste. We have, through our advocates, helped 1,000 people get food stamps, and we also provide a free tax preparation service out of that building, where we obtained $1,866 worth of refunds from our advocates on behalf of the people who live in the area. That's just the pantry. We now have the Family Resource Center, which was that small, single-story building. We've provided information and referrals to 6,857 people. Number of times direct services were provided was about 4,000. Here's the shocking number. Since January, we have helped 592 survivors of domestic and sexual violence. We have helped 926 people with our immigration services. We speak English, Spanish, Creole, and Arabic, and all of our social workers are licensed or certified. And we provide all of these services at no cost to the clients. The need is growing. It's not gonna go away fast, as you all know already. We are in a food desert, so people who want to have food, and for those of you who don't know what a food desert is, you can't get to a grocery store of any significant size unless you take a car or a cab. So the people that use our pantry are generally, they do not drive, and they do rely on us for food every week. They can come, like I said, every Friday. But this is what is shocking to me. Down at the bottom, if you can see this, in 2020, this tiny little line on each one of these months and people we serve in the pantry tells you how many people we helped in 2020, and then '21, '22, and '23. The line in 2023 obviously is off the charts. We are the only open pantry, pantry open in the area, five days a week, six hours a day. There are other pantries in the area. There is St. Peter's Havers, that's two hours on Thursday. There's Jewish Family Services. There's Bradley Beach. And they're all open less hours and fewer days than we are. The closest to what we do is lunch break, and obviously not accessible to the community here. Lunch break is also open five days a week. Sorry. And where does this all come from? It comes from high unemployment, it comes from high inflation. We don't expect anything like that to change in the next couple of years. In fact, we're absolutely positive it's just gonna continue to increase. As it becomes harder to put food on your table or a roof over your head, we find people are now choosing between one or the other. My attitude has been and will continue to be, come to the pantry, save your money, use it to keep a roof over your head here in the greater Asbury Park area. We did conduct, by hiring an outside consultant, a capital needs assessment two years ago. The buildings that you've seen that we want to knock down are 20 to 60 years old. None of them are handicapped, accessible. Last year, Asbury Park gave us a CBDG grant, so we could put a ramp into the pantry and then close off the dips between the buildings, so you could go from one building to the next and get into the pantry. Thank you for that. But the three buildings are no longer functional by any sense and definition of the term. The experts suggested that the nonprofit invested $500,000, that's a half a million dollars, in the safety and security of that building. In the first year I was executive director, obviously not a practical thing to do if the buildings are obsolete. I'll give you another example of the fun one. I can't imagine how much, you can't imagine how much fun it is when my board comes to their meetings on the second floor above the pantry, and I insist on giving them a safety briefing every time that if they do want to exit the building in case of a fire, I point to the local window and I say, "See the ladder at the bottom of the window? You throw the ladder out the window and climb down." That is our safety briefing from the second floor over the pantry. My point is that the buildings have to, they have to be upgraded significantly or torn down and rebuilt. We've looked at a number of different properties in the Asbury Park, greater Asbury Park area. Nothing would allow us to put all three pieces of our work under one roof, that being the pantry, the Family Resource Center, and all of the things that they do for the community, and also the administrative. We have grown so big in the last couple of years that we had to go across the border into the Gannon-Victoria Building right in Ocean Road and put what I call the bureaucrats, that's myself, our CFO, and things like that down here, so that we can continue to provide the services and respond to the needs of the community in the three buildings that we're approaching. So this is what we have come up with. Whoops, keep going wrong direction. We would take down the three buildings that are there. We would put in what is in effect a building that outlines the footprint of the property that we own already. We would eliminate the parking lot that is right here at 1103, and we would shorten up the parking lot that's behind 1108. We would take the park that's right now behind 1108 for kids to do group therapy programs. We use it a lot during Sandy. We'd take that out and move it to another place, and I'll get to it in a second. The plan is on the, and I'm gonna go through all of this in a second. The plan is to go put the pantry on the first floor in some type of cafe that is consistent with our nonprofit status, meaning I cannot make money off of any kind of cafe here. It would be something that serves our community that is not a soup kitchen, and I don't want to use any names because I don't have any agreements with people, but it would be something that would help the community and also allow us to come within the terms of and the definitions of a cafeteria. So our, the cafe, kind of hedging my bets. Like, it could be something like, and I emphasize it like, because I have not made any relationship with any person yet, something like a No Limits Cafe, or what they do at Bellmar on the border, or maybe even a Soul Kitchen type of, something that's consistent with the bottom on C3. We would knock down the 6,000, 7,000 square feet and put up a 16,000 square foot building. First floor would be a full floor. The second floor would be half of that with an outdoor rooftop garden. I'm gonna show you this in a second. And the third floor would be half of the second floor for the bureaucrats. So the first floor would, and here are the numbers, I mean, the square feet and everything. I'm happy to go over that with you. But the bottom line is the structure becomes about 16,000 square feet. All of the buffers and all of the setbacks, here's the buffers, and all of the setbacks are consistent with the redevelopment plan as it exists. Our intention is to comply in all other respects with the two we're gonna talk about with the redevelopment plan in all other respects. My understanding, and I'm sure somebody will correct me if I'm wrong, is that we could have built, if we wanted to, a four-story building here that would have included commercial on the bottom and affordable housing on the top. We had a lot of options. We wanted to keep what we have. We wanted to stay in Asbury Park. We've been here almost 38 years. I think today is our 38th birthday, being incorporated and living here in Asbury Park. And we want to continue providing services that people are comfortable with, and we wanted to do it in a stigma-free, respectful way that makes everybody's lives worthwhile. So going to the first floor, this is what it would look like. This is, whoops, that would be floor two. Are we missing the first floor? Oh, that's interesting. Well, good thing I have copies. All right? So the first floor is, I'll give you that. The first floor is simply two pieces, the cafeteria and, or the cafe, and the pantry. We're gonna double the size of the pantry, make it look more like a bodega, so that when you come in, you can walk and literally shove. Right now, you come in the front door, in order to accommodate all these people, you come in the front door and you keep walking in the same direction, and you go out the back door. It allows you to smoothly transition towards it. If you all want copies of the first floor, it's gonna look like. What happened to it is a mystery. I'm happy to share, in other words.
We've already seen it. I think we're good.
Yeah, I think we already had it. If anybody wants it, it's you. So that's the first floor, again, compliant with all respects, except for the fact that in 1999, we got to pantry, and the redevelopment plan was passed after that, and for whatever reason, they recluded the pantry in the redevelopment plan. Maybe they thought it was grandfathered, maybe Sister Carol overlooked it, nobody knows. And it doesn't really matter going forward. What we want is to be able to keep the pantry. In fact, we serve so many people that if we can't keep the pantry, we're gonna have to go to Plan B, which is to stay where we are and continue doing what we're doing where we're doing it. We own the property outright, and like I said, we've searched for something that's equally efficient or equally helpful for all of us all over Asbury Park and Neptune, and haven't found anything that allows us all to be in one space under one roof. Now watch the cafe. Number two, number one will show up. No, I don't know what happened to number one. We'll have to ask Sister Carol. So that's first floor. Here's the second floor. The second floor is simply office space. What we do up here, and Veronica, you correct me if I'm wrong, because I won't do this as well as you do, but right now, we do a lot of sexual assault and domestic violence cases. We do anger management at the jail, and also here. We also work with clients who have other needs, financial literacy, co-parenting. We do Youth With A Purpose. We do a lot of youth support groups. I'm really understating it, but this area here would allow our Family Resource Center to have conference rooms that they need, family rooms that they need in order to service the entire family, and also individual counseling offices for the licensed social workers and advocates who need that.
And that would allow things to be performed in a more private, sort of, private fashion, too.
Private, right, private. And also, you know, like I said, everything under one roof. Right now, the Family Resource Center, because of me, has had to split itself between 1108 and 1106. It's amazing how much more collaboration and problems all you can have if you're in one space. It would open up, because we lost that park to a parking lot, it would open up for a rooftop garden, which would be used for those kids I talked about during COVID.
And Kim, just excuse me, we're saying park. It's not a public park, it's just our.
Right, a rooftop garden. I mean, rooftop garden. So this would be the other half of the building here, and literally used so that for therapy purposes. The third, third is just the administrative piece. So it kind of, it could go up like a ship, I guess, if you wanted it to. But we wanted it to be a first floor here, because our immediate, and the neighbors are here, the immediate neighbors are right here, and we didn't want to tower over them. So we put the heavy piece of it, the taller piece of it here. Our bar is two floors, so it's a little less, you know, our bar, it doesn't hurt our bar in any way. It's not blocking the sun, it's not petting them in in any way. And this is the least offensive, I would guess. At least, you know, it doesn't make you look like I'm covering up all their light. So that the cafe is on this side because we thought this view, the redevelopment plan requires you to keep 70% transparency, like that, this view would be better for anybody who's having lunch there. As to parking, and I know it's always a challenge, we did not do an official study, because I wasn't gonna pay for it, but we did do anecdotal. We have, over the last couple of weeks, studied how many people. We do not let volunteers, we do not let volunteers, we do not let the clients park in the parking lots. There's too many trucks coming in and out, there's too many people flying in and flying out. If you do that, we found that some of our volunteers, the cars were getting hit. But on average, over a one-month period of time, we found that between all of us in the building, we used about 13 parking spaces. So we've asked the developer who's helping us do this to provide for 13 parking spaces, plus one handicap one over here. Basically, what would happen is people would walk down the sidewalk, and if they want to use the pantry, come in the back door and either go to the pantry over here or go into the cafe there. And if they want to use our services, our professional services, there's gonna be two sets of elevators. One's private, so you can go up and down in the third floor without a problem, and one would be accessible to the public. And we do the same thing with the bathrooms, so that the public can use bathrooms, especially down here where there could be a cafe and have a private, and the employees would have a private place for the bathroom upstairs. So back to the parking spaces. Our estimate was 13, so we stuck with the 13. Remember, our staff is, if they're staying in the office, they're only seeing clients, but if they're not, most of them are on the road. Our clients are food stamp advocates, and they need to go to where the clients are. We also have social workers who are out meeting clients where they are, going to court, and those types of things. So we don't really have as many parking spaces needed as we use. Like I said, it's an, it's an unscientific, it's not a professionally-done science, but we think 13 is enough for us. So if 13 weren't enough, we do have another piece of property. We have the school for fourth to eighth grade girls over on Springwood, which has plenty of room to put some parking spaces in, and we have our staff park over there and shuttle back over to 1106 or 1108. So it's, it would be, since they live around a lot anyway, it's not a problem to do that. And that would be our Plan B. We own that property also outright, and that's going to be 25, 25, 30 years, 28 years. So I don't see, it's easy enough to put in spaces for extra parking over there. So the application is, is, there's floor one, did you see that? The application is to amend the redevelopment plan to allow pantry as a permitted use. Page 39 of the redevelopment plan specifically prohibits a pantry. To us, the pantry is the very heart of our mission and our vision. It's the beginning of the ecosystem that we hope to develop to make people more able to end the generational aspect of poverty, that's to feed people so they can think straight up, and then provide them the wraparound services that are done over the family resource center and then get them a good education over at Sisters Academy. So our request is pretty narrow, and that is change two words in the redevelopment plan and just take out those two words that say no pantry, period, and then allow us to operate with just the 13 parking spaces. That is, I think, unless Kevin tells me something different, the end of.
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
And any questions?
I have no questions, Barry. I start off by thanking you and your staff and Veronica, everything you do for the city of Asbury Park. You do a great job, and we're looking to work together with you on this project.
Can you stick around, Kevin?
Yes, we will stick around for public comments. And just so I say it now and I don't forget, Donna and Michelle and Beth have been wonderful. They've been very helpful. They have not made any promises or representations, but they've been very accommodating and very helpful, and that's always appreciated to them. Thank you. And we'll stick here for any questions that you may have or public comments. Thank you for the time.
We do have members of the public who've come out just for the plan. So I, I did know someone would like to say a few words when, at the appropriate time. And I did know Beth, you asked me to address one other issue, and that was the why don't we have any renderings? Because I'm only changing two words in the plan, and I'm a nonprofit, and it's already cost me $40,000 to do what you've seen here.
Not me, just for the record, I'm not 40,000.
Kevin has been very generous, but the renderings would cost us another $60,000. So our position is.
Understood.
Our position is really, whatever you guys want to put up, Julianne's here, I know, whatever you want it to look like, I'm good with it. And we're not going to come back and ask for any other variances, any other changes. We're going to stick right with the plan other than those two words.
Thank you. Next up is a presentation by Sacman Enterprises regarding a temporary parking lot located at 512 514 Summerfield Avenue, blocks 3101, lots two and three.
All right, if I may, Andrew Carricks, from Block 4, on behalf of Sacman Asset Management Shared Equities, the owners of Lot 3101, lots two and three. As the city is aware, here is looking to see the redevelopment plan, a provision that allows for interim parking lot, the five years and additional five years that requires two things, requires approval by the city council, also planning. So what we are proposing today on these two lots, which measure together 57 feet by 100 feet, to do an interim parking lot, there is parking on half of this site now that had been used previously and stored on the site. So we're looking to enter the other parcel to this interim parking. Obviously, we require, as I indicated, council approval and planning work for the city. I'd like to go through Sacman up and go through what we're looking to do on this lot. Mr. Sacman, as I indicated, these two lots are owned by Sacman Asset Management, also shared equities, am I correct?
Yes.
Affiliated entities with Sacman?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Why don't we go through what is existing on the lots and what you're looking to do on this lot?
Well, essentially, 512 Summerfield was a lot previously. I believe that measures about 30 by 100 approximately. And what we're looking to do is just really have an interim parking lot coming off Summerfield and with a center entry and have a double loaded aisle of parking.
Ultimately, the plan is to go ahead and develop those lots, am I correct?
At some point, yes.
But at some point in the future, but currently, they're basically vacant that can be utilized, or have vacant that can be utilized for parking to relieve the situation with the CBD, correct? Sure. So the plan is to be able to utilize these lots to relieve the parking situation with the CBD on an interim basis, am I correct?
Yes.
And who would utilize these two lots?
Well, there's a building directly to the south, 527 Banks Avenue, which should be coming online in the next couple of months.
So any overflow from that building would utilize these lots, am I correct?
Yes, the building currently has 15 spaces dedicated to it underneath the transfer deck on site at 527. And so this lot is adjacent to it and backs up to the north side of that development and would be, you know, well located.
Say that development, what, this is the new one of Coconut Cross from Pascal and Savie that's on the corner there that they've been developing?
527.
527 Banks. It's got the brick facade.
Yep, yep.
Yep, on Banks.
So if we take a look at this, I'm going to point to where 527 Banks is.
Correct.
And that's the existing building, the building that's going up currently, correct?
Yes.
And then these parking spaces would serve that to relieve the situation by providing, relieve the parking situation in downtown by providing additional parking for tenants at 527 Banks, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. And the plan is just to have an interim until at some point in time, you develop these lots, am I correct?
Yes.
That's all we have.
Andy, do you have a street view that, like, I know, I know, you know, you're talking about the, by the dog, right?
Yeah, it's by the.
Just go to Google. I mean, I can.
Purple Glaze is right adjacent to the lot. Right next to it. That's the lot.
So you can see the 527 building.
And so where are the tenants from, from the Banks Avenue project going to be parking once this goes away and gets developed?
Well, you want me to answer that, or you want to answer that?
Go ahead.
That building that you're looking at, that white building, is built above a transfer deck. The space below the residential, which is floors two, three, and four, so we'll say the first floor, is shallow retail off Banks. And then the rear of that space on the ground floor is 15 parking spaces for 42 units. The balance that we had, we paid into a parking fund.
Then, of course, with the CBD redevelopment plan, if you have insufficient parking, you can then pay into the fund, which was done after, where you talked about.
I forget at the time we got that approved, though.
So it was paid into the funds. It respected the fact that all those values have been paid into the fund as allowed the CBD redevelopment, that this would still add some additional parking despite the fact the city got some different funds into their parking fund.
I'm lost.
So when you say you're giving some relief to downtown parking, when you pay into the parking fund, it doesn't really relieve downtown parking?
Well, it depends what the city does with the funds. The funds are paid in, it's allowed under the CBD redevelopment. So they're paying into the fund. So the payment was made and is allowed, but still looking to provide additional parking, seeing that the onsite parking is only 15 parking spaces.
And who's going to park here? Who's parking in those spots?
The residents from Downs.
From 527.
Let Andy, let Andy answer.
How many apartments are in 527 now?
Forty-two.
And how many parking spots are you already providing for them?
Fifteen. Fifteen of, on the first floor of the 527 site, not the lot that we're looking at. There's 19 we're proposing on the lot you're looking at.
And then you're paying the parking fund for the other ones, is that what you're saying?
You already paid.
It's already been paid. So 15 are already there. This is how many? I'm sorry.
Nineteen.
Nineteen. That was not my fortune. All right.
There, let me go back.
And then you're paying. You know, Carter, one of the problems we end up having with your parking is that you're, you charge far more than what people can get parking through the city. So what happens is, and someone correct me if I'm wrong, is that people overwhelm our parking department looking for spots that, whatever we charge, I'm going to make up a number, $100 a month at Banks Ave Garage, and then you charge $200 or $300 a month, which makes nobody parking your lot and everybody parking our published parking.
Well, I will only say, I can only.
What do you pay for parking in these lots?
Well, I'll probably charge somewhere between $150 and $200 a month, but I'll say that most of our spaces are full. So, I mean, the capacity is there. So I'm, and there might be people that don't want to pay that amount and look for alternatives, but the fact that the demand and the capacity, we fill our lots up. I mean, you know, that gets into a whole nother conversation, which, you know, I propose and, and I'm always a supporter of doing a deck on the 607 lot. I've, you know, provided concepts, ideas to the city. So that is always on the table and always open for discussion. I think it's a viable solution for everything happening in the CBD.
Can I just ask a question? Maybe Michelle also give us some clarification. The lot that we're talking about now, that you just showed us the picture of, are cars being parked there now?
It have, there is.
Not presently, no, no.
There is an existing parking.
Yeah, it was, but she's, if there's cars there now, I don't have cars there now.
So Michelle, can you just, because this is, this is kind of the question that we have, is that this is not a permitted parking lot, correct? And that's why they're asking for an interim?
Correct.
Half is.
Half, what do you say half? Explain, can you explain to the council what you mean by half?
512 Summerfield is a pre-existing non-conforming lot. It's been in existence for, since, I don't know, since I've been in town for.
Okay.
Twenty some odd years.
I could, I, am I clarified that it was restriped? That it, that a house was torn down, the parking lot expanded, and the parking area restriped?
On one of the lots, the house is torn down.
Correct.
Other lot that Mr. Sacman referenced was an existing parking lot historically has.
Yes, but it was, it was restriped with a different parking configuration.
So these cars have been illegally parked? Have they been illegally parking there or what?
We, we can, the municipal, we consider them illegally parked, and we have been in municipal court for a while, and this is why they're here before you today.
Well, I'll just say, we used the lot in the rear, we asked, we tore down the house. The lot was used as staging for the development of 527. So I had a lot of construction vehicles back there staging as opposed to on the streets of the CBD. We parked in the back.
Did you have permission to tear down the house?
We got approval.
Yes, we did, yeah.
527 Banks went in for amended proof to allow for that staging. So that has been approved for northern stage for 527 Banks, the construction, that had been approved by the planning board to do that. All right. Now, with regard to this, just keep in mind, again, half of that has historically been a parking lot. It's the other half that had it, and there was a house that was on there, leaning on lot.
It was 514 Summerfield.
Which is lot two, lot three had been a parking lot historically.
Do you want to pull up Google Maps and do like a satellite? That might be an easier way for people to see.
I don't have internet access. I don't have the password.
All right, I'll screenshot it and send it to council.
I'm just going to ask one more question. So part of it's paid into the parking fund, part of it you have built under 527. These other spots are needed as per the agreement?
No, they're not needed. We're just looking to try to provide additional parking.
No, they're not needed. They're just, they're just, it's a lot I have, it's going to sit there for a while till at some point we file a plan to develop on it, and until that time, we would like to use it as parking.
Otherwise, it's just a vacant lot.
Ah, okay, I see what you're saying.
And you'll be charging $150, $200 a month?
Yeah, to our tenants that reside at 527.
In addition to their rent?
Correct. That is correct.
So it's like the B truck. There's paved lots that aren't being used, one day they're going to be developed, they're going to be doing the same thing.
Exactly.
Correct.
So this isn't for the 527 people necessarily? I mean, they could, but it's not required of you to.
It is, it's not required, but from a practical standpoint, there'll be a demand, it's close proximity.
So we'll be marketing these to other buildings in the event that 527 residents don't want to use the space?
They're available spots, why not? If somebody wants to be able to utilize it far up the street, it makes sense to do that. But the first come, first served would be 527, so it's right adjacent to it.
And next, are you still in the process of staging, or have you completed the staging for 527?
We're pretty much done. We're stuck going in the back of 527 right now. So we have to finish that north elevation wall, which we're just about done with.
And they're still, when you look at the face of the banks, you're still working that's going up, they're completing the building, ready to sneak in.
And one last, and how long do you project that that space is going to be available to those tenants? A year, two years, six months?
I can't tell you, you know. I mean, it's tough right now to underwrite a lot of projects from the ground up right now with rates where they are. So, I mean, I just, I don't know, I can't answer that question.
So you're looking to stripe and light the other lot, essentially? Okay.
Yeah.
I got it.
Pretty much.
It's just in the interim, it's a vacant lot, it's used.
No, no, I get what you're saying.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We're now on to matters from City Council. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Nothing from me.
Thank you. Councilmember Chapman.
I have nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Clayton?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Nothing at this time.
Thanks. Mayor Moore?
The only thing I have is the two presentations we just heard, no vote is being taken tonight, but now if anybody's here to talk about either projects, I would ask that anybody talking about something else on the agenda or complain about leaves or something, that the people go first about these two projects so that people who made the presentation can go home. So we're ready for public participation?
I'm going to do matters from.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Lisa, thank you. A matters from, the city manager.
Thank you. I just wanted to report that we completed our best practices checklist again for 2023. This is a requirement of every municipality to identify what best practices are done in your community, and you have to maintain a score of at least 29 to get your full state aid, and we received a score of 37. So we'll be getting 100% of our state aid yet again. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matters from City Attorney?
Nothing at this time, Lisa.
Thank you. We're now into public participation. My motion to open the meeting to the public.
Move it open.
All in favor? Public participation portion is now open. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, please use the microphone. You're going to state your name and address for the record. There'll be a three minute time limit for each speaker. Again, your name and address. Thank you.
So again, if anybody's here for the two presentations, I would ask they go first. Thank you.
Good evening, Kevin D'Angelo, 713 Third Avenue. We're direct neighbors with the Mercy Center, just want to talk in favor of what they're doing. They're a good organization. We have no issues or problems with them, given their clientele and all. They keep a good property. And again, we could just advise that the council would take their recommendations and approve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, and it's nice to hear our neighbors talking nice about other neighbors.
Oh my god!
Yeah, it's, it's very seldom, so thank you.
Sitting too long. Okay, uh Rita Moreno, five oh four Eighth Avenue. Uh first, I'd like to know about the resolutions five fifteen, five sixteen, and five seventeen. And uh, the ordinance is about, one of the ordinances is about Cove. Is that the one in front of Asbury Towers? You know, Bradley said you can't ever, forever change Ocean Avenue, and I think that's what the Cove is trying to do. So anyway, I wanna, and about the ordinances, I don't know why you bother passing them, nobody abides by them. A simple fence ordinance, five years in the making. And I'd like to know if the engineer, if they hired an engineer to look at the bushes. And that's it. Oh, by the way, wait a minute, I'm not finished. He only had fifteen parking spaces for forty-something apartments? That has to be looked into. No money is worth putting into the parking fund, and no parking, that's ridiculous. And that's all.
Donna, do you want to answer the questions?
Yeah, the um resolutions you're speaking about, Rita, were previously adopted by the council in May of twenty twenty-three. These are um agreements between the city and um urban ventures, um and what has occurred is that they have obtained different financing, so we've had to update these as top agreements to identify the new lenders in the agreements.
Well, one of them says eleven fifty, there's no Suradurst, there's no uh Kingsley Street. That was my property.
Which, which one are you speaking about, Rita?
I think it was the second one, it says eleven fifty Kingsley. There's no such address.
I don't, if you, what ordinance, what resolution-
Five sixteen, resolution five sixteen. It's the name of the entity.
That's just the name of the entity, that doesn't mean it's a street address, that's what the, they, they call themselves that, like, one, two, three Main Street, that's just their name.
Oh, okay, I thought it was their address.
Nope, that's just their name.
Okay, what about the others? Five seventeen.
Five seventeen? That's, that's the same orga- that's the same group of resolutions, we had to amend all these agreements because they changed lenders. And these were pre- these were previously adopted back in May. These are subsequent developer agreements for these developments.
How do you get that? You just put an OPA request?
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, now why do we need an OPA request?
Well, they're, they're, they're in the packet too, I mean, these are public documents.
Oh, yeah, I know. But uh, you, uh-oh.
Just give me a call tomorrow early so we can get these for you, Rita.
Alright.
Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I just wanna say one more thing.
Sure.
Why do you have to get a permit if you know? I mean, why do you have to get an OPA request if you wanna know if somebody has a permit to do construction on their house? What time you, what time you get the permit? Now, they get the permit, the uh OPA request takes from five to seven days.
If there's something that you feel is being done um inappropriately, you can call the construction office and they can look up the address for you, let you know if there's an active permit.
I did that, I don't know, you don't get response.
Um, our construction official's pretty responsive, so I'm surprised he didn't call you, but you can always call me, and you know that.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I hope the timer doesn't run out before I get through to this. Um, good evening council persons, and each of you representing your different um agencies in the room tonight. Uh, my name's Alana Montgomery, I'm here representing the Good News Radio, which is um W Y G G eighty-eight point one FM, which is located at four fourteen Asbury Avenue in Asbury Park, we had um the, the board president um of the radio station, Pastor Gene Guy Florville, who since have left. Uh, I'm just here to represent the Haitian community. Um, as some of you may know, um and are aware, Good News Radio is predominantly French and Haitian Creole speaking. Um, we are located in Asbury Park, it functions as a bridge in providing information um to the community who needs the services, Good News Radio serves as an uh provides an array of multilingual service um to, I mean, multilingual listeners who are Haitian Creole speaking, English and Spanish speaking, which provides vital information connecting listeners with the community resources. So I'm here to support um Mercy Center's agenda. Basically, Mercy Center has been a longstanding pillar in the community, providing hope to a lot of families, vulnerable populations of Asbury Park and the neighboring towns. So we have come to understand that Mercy Center has been helping a lot of the Haitian community. And if you guys know Haitians, uh we're private people, um we don't trust easily, we um kinda keep to ourselves, so a lot of us suffer in silence, so Mercy Center has opened its doors and has provided a lot of resources, and so the Haitian population has become to trust Mercy Center. So they are helping a lot of individuals, not just the Haitian population, so we are hoping that um council persons will approve their agenda, because as you know, after the pandemic, there has been a lot of families who are in need of a lot of resources. Housing shortages, a lot of food um insecurities, there's domestic violence that skyrocketed, so there's a need for Mercy Center, we want it to stay, we want it to continue to thrive in the community, we needed to provide everything that these families need so that they can sustain their very basic needs in life, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could just say something, um our director of communications, I'm sorry, what was your name again?
Alana Montgomery.
Um, if you could give your information to our communications director, we do, or we're doing a lot of outreach to the Haitian community, we're doing a lot of flyers in Haitian. If we could have an outlet to your radio station, and we could send you all of our information of our programs and services, I think that would be really helpful in communicating with your community. So Sonia, if you could wave your hand, and you guys can kinda touch base and just get together, we can send you some of the information that we have. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Jim McLaughlin. I am a volunteer at the Mercy Center pantry. And I'm here tonight to support the unbelievable work that Kim and her staff have done in bringing this pantry to Asbury Park. The facility, the way it's set up, is to make the people who come in as comfortable as possible in terms of their food needs. As Kim alluded to, it, it's set up like a, a mini bodega slash mini supermarket, where people actually come through the door, and they shop for their, their goods, they, they shop for their food. Uh, it's very well controlled, very well managed, but we are bursting at the seams. The uh, people who do utilize the pantry come and register in one area, and they can stay in that area if there's available space to sit. But more often than not, not a half an hour into the opening of the pantry, that area is full. So that people start to queue outside the, the pantry office to register very early, as a matter of fact, they're queuing up even before the pantry opens. And this is outside. So during the summer, it's very hot. Spring is fine, fall is okay, but in the winter, I fear these people are going to be very cold, waiting for their opportunity to come into the pantry. And because the pantry is as small as it is, we can only accommodate four to six people coming through the pantry at a time. So as these people are queuing outside, they're waiting for those people who were ahead of them to get through with their shopping. And that's really blowing down uh what we do there. They come in and they shop as if they're shopping in a supermarket, Del Cattis or a bodega. It's very unintimidating, and they are free to uh take as much time as they need, but under the circumstances, because of the queue that's outside, occasionally at times we have to hurry them along. But the, the food is excellent, it's uh top grade. And uh these people are extremely appreciative of what Kim and the Mercy Center is offering them in terms of their food needs. It's, it's an unbelievable place to volunteer. My wife and I have been doing it now for about a year, and uh I, I would strongly urge the council to seriously consider the proposal that's in front of you so that the pantry can expand, it's already great work that it's doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Sylvia, Sylvia, Asbury Park Chamber of Commerce Director. Um, I just came to get a couple of dates on um your calendar, but and I, I didn't realize that the presentation was gonna be um about uh the new facilities, so I'll side note on that. I had uh the opportunity to go through the facilities there when Kim first had uh taken the position, and I had the opportunity to hear Kim speak about the services that they do, and at that point, uh initially, she had, she was serving, I think it was three hundred people a month. Within the first eleven months, that had risen to three thousand a month, because she had revised the way the um how you could participate so that she could do more and better outreach, um and now it looks like uh they're going to be doing sixty-six hundred a month. Um, and as you know, my office is like diagonally across the street, like one block down from there, so I, I do see the clientele um in the lines outside a lot, cause I'm past there often, um and you know, I never interfere with applications or anything, but I, I don't think I'd get fired for saying that on behalf of the chamber, we really think that Mercy Center, uh certainly under the leadership of Kim Dagnow are really rock stars for the community. And thank you for everything that you do, Kim, uh so, back onto what I actually came here to say. Um, we'll be having, if our applications pass, um our downtown tree lighting on uh Saturday, December second, um six o'clock, and we'll be having our uh downtown menorah lighting on December eleventh at um five thirty. We had to, we found a different location because Kennedy Park is um under uh reconstruction right now. Um, so with some guidance from uh Leisha's office, I went down and I looked at the Civil War Memorial area, and um that's also got uh Tom Pavinski Garden there, so I checked with Tom first to see if he thought that that would be a good space to do the menorah, and he said that he thought that would be a, a terrific um alternative to where we normally have it, so hopefully that would be okay, and I um I hope to see everybody there, but I'll be sending out reminders on that. Uh, lastly, uh we'll be starting the business decorating contest, it's the window decorating contest that we do all the time, we try to light up Asbury Park for the holidays to make it more festive for the community, as well as our visitors who come here uh to uh frequent our restaurants and our stores. Just today, uh Matt and I were talking about how to make it more all-inclusive, so I think what we're gonna do is, you don't need to sign up anymore, if you're a business here, you're just a part of it. And we'll judge and give everybody, every place, um a prize.
Thank you, just one quick thing, I just wanna make sure I got this right. On Saturday, December second, you're having your Christmas tree lighting.
Right.
Downtown.
Right.
On Friday, December first, the city's having their Christmas tree lighting, correct?
Yes.
Christmas tree lighting at Fireman's Park. So, thank you.
Yeah, and- Yeah, and Sylvia, Kennedy, Kennedy Park should be open by December first, so if you wanna keep it in Kennedy Park, well, we can talk offline, but they're just finishing up now, the sod has to settle, so you should be able to do it in Kennedy Park.
That would be wonderful, I think we already have the whole there.
Not anymore.
Hi, my name is Scott Mizrahi, and I'm the owner of Lolo's Cafe, I'm a longtime resident, and my business has been here about thirteen years. Uh, we have a resolution, I'm sorry, it's not a noble cause as Mercy, so it's hard to discuss this tonight, but uh there's a few things that I think in a new resolution that's coming out, about the sidewalk cafes. Um, I'd just like to get some more clarity, and I'm wondering if it's possible, most of you on the council, I know some of you are familiar with my establishment. Um, just wondering if I could invite everybody down and go through some of these resolutions. I know it can't be on a case-to-case basis, it has to be one for all, but if it's possible for us, for some of you members to come down and see what I do and how we do it, I think I've been a very good um uh establishment here. Uh, if you could ask any of the officers, we never give anybody any trouble, I know sometimes it's been crowded, but we do it the best, and anytime any of the officers or anybody came down to say, to move some people along, we do it. Um, so, again, I'm just wondering if it's possible if we could have an open discussion before anything is passed. It's happened before where everything, well, this is what you've decided, before you see actually what we do. So, I'm just wondering if I could speak to anybody before you make any decisions. That's all.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Chris Jepeda, eight eleven Monroe Ave. I'm the owner of Good Feeling Farms in Asbury Park, where we grow microgreens wholesale, we've been doing it since twenty seventeen. In October twenty twenty, we received a conditional cultivation license from the state of New Jersey on condition of municipal approval. We will uh sell that, uh license makes us sell wholesale, we will never be a dispensary. Well, we will be selling to dispensaries, I have a letter from the um the lawyer calling us an adult-use cannabis dispensary, again, we are not a dispensary, we never will be a dispensary. Uh, two years ago, I took a, kind of a apprenticeship at Bass Cannabis in Massachusetts, and I learned about their workflow. Uh, our workflow, this is, we'll imitate this, and we'll hire about ten people to do this in the first year. After the first year, we're able to expand under state law, a bit. Uh, one thing I learned, which was, I thought really interesting, was they have an extraction kitchen, and in the extraction kitchen, they make tinctures and other products out of cannabis gummies. Um, so they had three uh businesses there, two of these were from Colorado. So what I thought to myself was, I know New Jersey, what's gonna happen is New Jersey growers are gonna come, and they're gonna bring California companies, cannabis companies in. And so, I wanted to prevent doing that, I wanted to keep everything local, so I reached out to my good friends at Cool Farms, and I said, hey, can I start doing a workshop to either teach people how to do this, or get people who are doing it without a license, and then with the help of a launch center, get them a license. Uh, so we've had a lot of success doing that. Uh, doing that for two years, we have some people ready to go if, if this is approved, uh which I'm very excited about the potential of. Uh, then the last thing that the current farm we're doing is trying to get uh working with the U E Z coordinator to do job training with the um Boys and Girls Club of New Jersey, uh Asbury Park, which is, which is, I'm excited for that opportunity as well. So with your support, we can approve a wholesale cultivation business in Asbury Park, and together we can also disallow dispensaries, and the, the law allows each municipality to opt in and out of the different licenses, so there's nothing that we want, uh dispensary in town, but we do want a cultivation business, and we want to house small, locally-owned properties to do, to spend, uh to do extraction, gummies, tinctures, all that kind of stuff. So, thank you.
Okay, and uh, stay there for a second, please. And you're gonna have to say when I'm getting out of line, I'm gonna get sued. But uh I visited your establishment, uh, what, a year and a half ago or so, and uh fantastic, you hire all Asbury Park or, close to Asbury Park residents, fantastic. It, it blew me away, how great it was, nobody even knew it was there. Uh, I told the rest of the council about it, I know another council member, at least one went and toured, and basically thought the same thing as me. Uh, okay, so more than one went and toured. And you're caught in the middle of a stupid litigation that has nothing to do with growing marijuana, somebody wants to bring in a wholesale, so I, I it's a great business, he's a great guy, he hires Asbury Park residents, and yet we're saying we can't deal with him, and I know because of pending litigation, but it's killing him and it's killing the city, so what do we do?
Right now, under advice of council, based on the litigation that's pending, uh regarding an entirely different form of cannabis in the city, um, the, the city is not in a position to move forward in any respects with regard to cannabis uh consideration and licensing, unfortunately- unfortunately. But beyond that, I really can't comment, given the pending litigation, but it's something that obviously the mayor and council will take under consideration, and there may be a time when it will be appropriate to consider cannabis in Asbury Park, but right now, it's not something that mayor and council are in a position to consider.
All right, I just, I just want to, I just hope that in the future, two years from now, after the litigation's over, that in the worst case scenario, somehow lose the litigation, which I honestly don't think they have a case at all. But if we're in Neptune, doing what we want to do here in Neptune, and then you end up getting the dispensary anyway, just think about potentially hedging your bet, I guess is what I'm saying.
I can't agree with you more, and sometimes you got to like, you know, go with your gut feeling, but, you know, we're being told at this time, things, discussion we'll have again with our attorneys in closing, to see what can be done, because I don't want to lose you, the city does want to lose you, the city does want to lose Asbury Park workers to Neptune, and you're providing, again, nobody knew you were there. So it wasn't like, wow, like, you know, they're causing chaos, they're doing this, they're doing that. You offer a great service, so let's see if we can figure something out, Chris, and I appreciate everything you and your workers are doing.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Thomas DeSano, 3600 Route 66, Neptune. I came to talk about Holy Spirit Church, and I noticed that there's this propaganda that's going about the developer of the property has been contacting media and saying they're, they want to save the church. By save, I mean gut the entire inside, make it condos and a coffee bar, something like that. To illustrate how silly that is, I want to bring this back 50 years to the Mayfair Theater. If instead of knocking that theater down, we had gutted the entire inside, filled it with condominiums and a coffee bar, would anybody stand in front of it and pat themselves on the back and say, I saved the theater? Look at the theater, we saved the Mayfair? No, you didn't save the Mayfair, you destroyed it. You gutted the inside, you put condos in there, you can't say you saved the Mayfair. It is silly to say that their plan to put condos inside there would save the church. They're destroying the church. The, I noticed in the media this week, they tried to put a gun to your head, and they said, six months, if you don't, if you don't do our other plan, which by the way is illegal because it violates the zoning and it it is disastrous for things that you care about that are problems in the city, like density and gentrification, so you have to worry about that. They're telling you, if you don't do that, we're going to knock this building down in six months. Well, I wanted to come tonight and take that gun away from your head in that six-month time period. As as a very vocal parishioner of Holy Spirit about this issue, I can tell you, I'd rather not see the building there. The reason why our heart doesn't hurt when we go down the beach over the Mayfair after all these years is because the structure's not there. And if it was, every time we would go past it, we would say, wow, I can't believe what we lost. The fact that it's gone, it lives in our memories, that's good enough for us. It'd be the same for Holy Spirit. Every time I would ride past that buildings with a Starbucks inside of it, my heart would ache. I would rather, and the parishioners would rather, it just not be there. So I want to tell you, please take that gun away from your head that they're trying to put there. They want to negotiate with you to do something that our zoning doesn't allow. I hope you'll tell them no. They went to court, they fought for the right to build six lots and knock the church, church down. Tell them to go ahead. Call them on it. Tell them, feel free to spend that $600,000 or $800,000 to knock that church down, because the parishioners are going to support you on that. You don't have to worry about how that's going to look with us. But please don't buy into this new mantra that they have, that they're quote, saving the church, and you guys are not, when it's the opposite. I know that you guys would love to save it, they're the ones that applied to knock it down and won that right. On a related issue, we still, I don't believe, have an ordinance in this town for historic preservation. We look back to everybody's chagrin at prior generations for losing things like the Monterey. People are going to look at us the same way, and I'm including myself, I didn't save that church, so it's on me too. That church is, the bishop is going to sell Mount Carmel within 10 years. We didn't save Holy Spirit. You've got
Finish your paragraph.
You've got to put something in place, historic preservation-wise, to save what we have for our generation. We're already looking bad, we don't want to look further bad when the bishop sells Mount Carmel. Thank you for all your work you've done.
Thank you, sir.
And I liked both those presentations tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, Councilman Matt Daniels, 1026 Monroe Avenue. I am here tonight to boost the comments of my friend Chris Chiapetta about Good Feeling Farms, though. After our discussion and after his comments, our purpose seems to have changed, and I am here not only to do that, but to voice frustration. Now, the overall topic of what we are asking for of the stigmatization of marijuana and cannabis, and the move forward is one that if we got into, I'd be here, we'd be here, you know, till next year. And a lot of the times when we think about that, and we think about these general topics, we think about the the way that we get to the promised land without the actual, actual walks and the steps. And I just want to say that, you know, our business owners are the closest thing to Asbury Park residents that are Asbury Park residents. And the Chiapetta family, Chris, in particular, as you know Mayor Moore, has done a tremendous job at not only immersing himself in the community, but helping that community. From giving people jobs for a month to that they needed, to giving me a job that lasts. And when we don't give light, or we are giving light, when there are certain obstacles in the way, put in the way of this, when there are good businesses trying to do great things and progress the town, it's not only frustrating, it's extremely detrimental. And I know that this is not on you guys, I get that. Shame on our big corporations that try to come into Asbury Park and do not know what the community of not only the residents of Asbury Park is, but the businesses of Asbury Park. Businesses like Cool Farms that Chris has worked with to teach people about proper cannabis intake and regulation and all of that, things that we have not been able to learn about because of the stigmatization of marijuana. And so as the time, as my time draws near the close of it, all I can ask is that you guys continue to try to work with us, and we keep those avenues open to work, because we're very excited to have that in this town. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dana Conzo, I don't live in Asbury. I'm an anthropologist, actually, by training, I work at Rutgers, and I've been doing a research project on Mr. Chiapetta's farm for about a year and a half. And I guess I second Matt Daniels' frustration a little bit. As not an Asbury Park resident, I see the inequality so starkly in this town, and as the Mercy Center demonstrated so beautifully how desperately in need this community is for on-the-ground grassroots community organizing, and not, I'm not even a cannabis user, so I'm not going to talk about the cannabis specifically, but just the business that can bring jobs into this community, and for everyone to just be like, no, thank you, is really like sad. And I thank you, Mayor Moore, for your support, and I know that you've visited the farm and you know how amazing it is, and I really would hate to see such a, like a good business vacate the town and go somewhere else, somewhere else in need, obviously, but the heart of the workforce, and Mr. Chiapetta is really in Asbury, and it's going to be sad when he has to leave. And also, of course, I hope you understand that you can choose to not have a dispensary and still grow. It's a totally different aberration, there won't be an issue with parking, it'll actually just bring other people's money into the community, nobody in Asbury Park will even be buying cannabis there. So it's, I think, more benefit than loss, but to say no to it is, you're going to lose a lot. So thank you so much for your time, and thank you so, so much for the council members and the mayor that do support.
Again, we thank you. Seeing nobody else, motion closed.
Second.
Motion, favor?
Aye.
This patient portion is now closed.
I'm just going to say, okay, I'm just going to say something quick as far as Chris and Matt and everybody. I'm limited to what I can say. Obviously, the attorney said, hey, John, shut up, we're being sued. But when the marijuana laws were passed, it was to help small businesses like you make money in the town they love. And somehow, somebody that's not a small business like you, from a town they love, is screwing it up. And it's something we have to deal with, and I should leave it at that, right, Fred?
You should leave it at that.
How long has the case been going on? Like, at what point?
I will talk to you after the meeting.
Yeah, and I'm just going to say one quick thing too, because this is, as, I mean, it is equal, I'm going to say this to both you guys and to Tommy, this is equally frustrating for us. So the fact that, I think, you know I did a tour, I think you have a great organization, cultivation's very different than dispensary, but the team representing us has advised us that we can't consider any sort of marijuana in Asbury while we're getting sued in both state and federal court. And then to Tommy's point, we also can't talk about how frustrating the experience is that we're the big bad wolves trying to take down this church. So it is very frustrating for us to not also be able to speak on either one of these issues that are involved in litigation. Very frustrating.
That's it.
Thank you.
She's, she said it the right way, I said it the wrong way. But again, I thank you both, and hopefully we can work this out.
Fred's holding his breath until everybody stops talking.
Thank you. We're now on to the minutes. I have the executive meeting minutes and regular meeting minutes of October 25th, and the municipal council executive meeting and special meeting minutes of November 1st. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're now on to consent agenda resolutions. All matters listed on consent agenda are presented collectively to the city council and will be considered for approval with one vote. These matters are considered to be routine in nature, and there will be no individual discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by one or more councilmembers as to any particular item, then said item shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. On consent agenda tonight, we have resolutions 2023-501 through 2023-503. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're now on to individual resolutions. I have resolution 2023-504, resolution approving payment of bills.
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-505, resolution authorizing emergency removal and disposal of an underground fuel storage tank at the new Asbury Park Fire Department headquarters. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-506, resolution approving change order number eight for the Memorial Drive Improvements Project.
Move it.
What's up?
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-507, resolution adopting a corrective action plan in response to the recommendations contained in the 2022 report of audit.
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-508, resolution accepting the 2022 municipal audit.
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-509, resolution of support for grant application to the Local Aid Infrastructure Fund for the reconstruction of Monroe Avenue and Comstock Street.
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-510, resolution adopting an affirmative marketing plan for the city of Asbury Park.
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-511, resolution providing for the combination of certain issues of not to exceed $8,600,000 general obligation bonds of the city of Asbury Park and the county of Monmouth in the state of New Jersey determining the form and other details of such bonds and providing for the sale of such bonds to the Monmouth County Improvement Authority pursuant to the governmental pooled loan program. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-512, resolution of the council of the city of Asbury Park, Monmouth County, New Jersey, of intent to fund spending plan shortfall for affordable housing programs in the city's housing element and fair share plan. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-513, resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Asbury Park to enter into a first amendment of the subsequent developer agreement with Asbury Partners LLC as master developer and Somerset Asbury Park with the development of property located at blocks 4,005, lots 1, 3, and 4 in the city of Asbury Park. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
No.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
No.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-515, resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Asbury Park referring accessory dwelling unit, ADU ordinance to the city of Asbury Park Planning Board and directing the planning board to take actions, to take certain actions pursuant to the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-516, resolution of the mayor and the city council of the city of Asbury Park to enter into a recognition agreement with 1150 Kingsley Senior Investors LP as the lender for AP Block 4,001 Venture Urban Renewal LLC in connection with the development of property located at Block 4,001, lots 2.01, 2.02, and 2.03. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
No.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
No.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-517, resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Asbury Resolution 2023-517, resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Asbury Park to enter into a stop loan recognition agreement with 1150 Kingsley Senior Investors LP as the lender for block AP, I'm sorry, as the lender for AP Block 4,001 Venture Urban Renewal LLC in connection with the development of property located at Block 4,001, lots 2.01, 2.02, and 2.03. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
No.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're now on to ordinances for introduction, and ordinance 2023-38, ordinance of the city of Asbury Park amending and supplementing section 8-11 entitled rates, display of rates required of chapter 8 taxi cabs, liveries, and valet parking of the code of the city of Asbury Park with a public hearing date of November 21, 2023. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Ordinance 2023-39 has been removed from tonight's agenda. We're on to ordinance 2023-40, ordinance of the city of Asbury Park amending and supplementing section 12-1 entitled State Uniform Construction Code Enforcing Agency of Chapter 12 Building and Construction of the Code of the City of Asbury Park with a public hearing date of November 21, 2023. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Ordinance 2023-41, ordinance of the city of Asbury Park establishing a new section 3-11 to be known as public parks within chapter 3 police regulations of the code of the city of Asbury Park with a public hearing date of November 21, 2023. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Ordinance 2023-
Question.
Yep.
I thought you wanted to add something to this.
The language that was suggested by the city manager is being incorporated into the ordinance that you introduced.
Ordinance 2023-42, ordinance amending and supplementing chapter 20 entitled Environmental Regulations of the Code of the City of Asbury Park to establish a new section thereof to be known as 20-5 privately owned salt storage with a public hearing date of November 21, 2023.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Ordinance 2023-43 has been removed from tonight's agenda. We're now on to second readings, public hearings. I have ordinance 2023-32, ordinance of the city of Asbury Park amending and supplementing section 4-1 entitled Business Licenses of Chapter 4 General Licensing of the Code of the City of Asbury Park. Do we have a brief overview of ordinance? Thank you, before we open the public hearing. Julianne Murray, I hope you're providing that.
Thank you, Julie.
Well, we looked at the fees that we are currently charging for the various types of businesses to obtain their mercantile license, and they had not been raised in many years, and they were not found to be commensurate with similar municipalities to Asbury Park. So it was only appropriate and a good time to, to raise them now so that they can go into effect for the new year when the registrations are renewed and thereafter when new businesses are formed or brought to the city.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance 2023-32.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing on ordinance 2023-32 is now open. If any members of the public would like to speak, please use the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and your comments may be regarding ordinance 2023-32 only.
Motion closed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing on ordinance 2023-32 is now closed. Motion to adopt ordinance 2023-32.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn has left the room. Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Thank you, Julie.
Okay.
It's like, oh, this is like-
Michelle?
We're now on to ordinance 2023-33, ordinance of the city of Asbury Park amending and supplementing section 4-9 entitled Display of Merchandise in Public Areas Outdoor Sidewalk Cafes of Chapter 4 General Licensing of the Code of the City of Asbury Park. Director of Planning and Redevelopment, Michelle Alonso, will provide a brief overview of the ordinance.
Good evening. This is the sister ordinance to the mercantile license one. This is the ordinance that regulates licenses for outdoor displays and outdoor cafes. We did a few amendments to this ordinance, including raising the fees, but also tightening up some of the definitions in this ordinance, making it easier for code enforcement, the zoning officer, to approve the outdoor layouts that are submitted with this license, and also for code enforcement to better enforce this ordinance. We also took items that we had in the application and if they will be, that we have added over the years as sidewalk cafes have grown in popularity, and they're now going to be codified in the ordinance and just not, and not just part of the application. And that's the brief summary.
Now, before council opens this up to a public hearing, I have one minor amendment that I would like council to consider working into the ordinance at the time of second reading this evening. The beginning of the ordinance, section 4-9.1 on page 1 of the ordinance that's in your packets, deals with the definitions that are involved with this section of the code. And the term outdoor slash sidewalk cafe is defined to mean an area adjacent to a restaurant, bar, market, or other commercial establishment that is intended to be utilized for the purpose of outdoor dining, including the service of food. And the way the ordinance is written, it's food and beverages with table, tables and chairs. So that in order to be eligible for this license, the establishment must serve food and beverages. And it was rightly brought to my attention that there are at least one craft distillery and one craft brewery that are located within the confines of Asbury Park, and those types of establishments, given their state license, are not permitted to serve food. But they, like the other bars and restaurants, would like to have the opportunity to have tables and chairs outside their premises. So my thought on that, and I discussed this with Michelle earlier today, is that we would add an additional sentence to the definition as contained within the ordinance before you that says, "An outdoor slash sidewalk cafe shall also mean an area adjacent to a craft brewery or craft distillery where patrons may consume beverages purchased from such establishment." And in my estimation, I do not believe that that substantially alters the substance of the ordinance because it's merely in accordance with state law that doesn't allow for the service of food at those types of establishments. So with your permission, I would request that a motion to amend the ordinance to incorporate that language into the definition of outdoor slash sidewalk cafe be made and seconded and voted upon, and then we'll open up the public hearing on the ordinance as amended.
Make a motion to move it.
To amend the ordinance to include the additional language I just indicated.
Second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Okay.
Now we can open up the public hearing on the ordinance as amended.
I have a motion to open up the public hearing on ordinance 2023-33.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing on ordinance 2023-33 is now open.
Move to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing on ordinance 2023-33 is now closed. Motion to adopt ordinance 2023-33.
As it has been amended.
As been amended.
Move to adopt as amended.
Thank you.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're now on to ordinance 2023-34, ordinance of the city of Asbury Park authorizing and encouraging electric vehicle supply service equipment, EVSE, and make-ready parking spaces and amending chapter 30 land development regulations of the code of the city of Asbury Park in certain respects. Director of Transportation, James Banano, is here to provide a brief overview.
Hello. So this is the DCA Model Statewide EV Ordinance that is published by the state on September 1 of 2021. It talks about how EV chargers should be implemented in certain developments, new developments, as well as on the street, along roadways. The majority of this ordinance is mandatory and already in place by the state, but there is a section where the city itself can determine certain variables, how it plays out, mostly around signage and like roadway, how it's implemented in paint and stuff like that. The planning board is sending this to you with the recommendation of two additions. One is a simple text addition of the word regulations to kind of specify, you know, or I should say more clarify better a sentence, and the second is just for the inclusion of, or I should say a maximum charge if someone is to charge, someone is to impose a fee for charging your vehicle. You can't be any more than 50 cents per kilowatt per hour, which is a kind of standard price at the moment. So those are the only edits that the planning board provided.
Good, thank you.
And have those been incorporated into the ordinance?
Yes.
Thank you. I have motion to open the public hearing on ordinance 2023-34.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public hearing on ordinance 2023-34 is now open.
Hi, Carrie Butch, 500 DLH5. How is everybody tonight? This is, this is a hard one for me because I watched the entire discussion you guys had on the planning board, and I didn't understand any of it. I think that part of this discussion should go before the green team, if it hasn't already, and the environmental commission, if it hasn't already, because I don't, I think that there's a lot of, they could have a lot of input that might shine light on what's happening prior to you passing this ordinance, because I felt like the folks that were discussing it that night in the planning board were not really, were very good at listening and participating, but they weren't really, you know, familiar with this kind of a situation. So prior to, I would just, I would just, my advice to you guys is to take a look at this one more time. The other thing is, is that at the planning board, was it a public hearing? Because the public didn't speak at all, and there was no opening to the public to make a comment on September 18th. So I'm wondering how this is the second ordinance or the second public reading? Can you tell me that?
Well, the public hearing on the ordinance is required before the mayor and council, which is what was duly advertised and being undertaken this evening. The review and recommendation by the planning board, I don't know that they typically open that up for comments from the public. We do a, you know, the ordinances are referred to the planning board that, under the municipal land use law, if they're a development regulation, so.
Michelle's saying that they don't have to open to public comment at the planning board. But if I could, if I could address some of the other things you just talked about, so like I said, the majority of this is mandatory text that we're not allowed to change because it's implemented by the state itself. If you have it in front of you, there's a section called standards for all new EVSE and make-ready parking spaces. This is, really just pertains to things like if it's in a public parking space, what kind of bollard goes in front of it to protect the sidewalk?
No, I agree with you. That kind of stuff I understand.
So that's what I'm saying, but for the green team and for other organizations, it doesn't really apply to them because it's not changing the number of EV chargers or how they're implemented or things like that. It's just strictly development oriented, getting information to the user kind of thing.
I think it's more of the technical standards for this program within the community that is dictated by the DCA. So the substantive changes that the plant, that the green team or other environmental type agencies, it's not part of this ordinance. I think that's what you're saying.
Yes.
Right, but you're making a decision, even a, even a policy decision on how much you charge. Actually, I thought that the reason why we brought these to Asbury Park was because that we were green and that we were encouraging people to use electric cars and to cut down on the CO2 in the environment. So by, by saying, by even making the decision what to charge is almost kind of saying where you are as a community, whether you're trying to-
They're not making a decision what to charge, it's the maximum what they can charge.
Right, but in a way, that is making a decision on what you can charge.
Not necessarily.
I, I'm just saying, like, right now, you're saying there's a maximum that you can charge. If the city wanted to, the city could say, "We're going to keep this as low as we can because we want to encourage it." That's why I thought maybe that you'd want to introduce this to the green team or the environmental commission. It's very hard to understand. I don't even know what 50 cents a kilowatt hour is. I have an electric car right now. I don't even know how many kilowatt hours my electric car has. So you would have to tell me, you know, it's, if you're voting on something that you don't understand and you don't know how much will be charged if it was the maximum, you know, kind of-
The, the idea was that to create a maximum would be that if someone wanted to impose a fee, that they can't impose a fee that would hurt the residents, people trying to use the chargers. It wasn't an attempt to, for the city to create a fee, it was to protect users because it's a benefit. We don't want a company to put in a charger and charge a dollar per kilowatt per hour, which would be very expensive. And for reference, our chargers in the city currently charge, I think, 43 or 44 cents per kilowatt per hour.
Okay. I still think you should have like more kind of discussion on this, but that's, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This came before the planning board, and they don't have to have a public, have the part, they don't have to participate, Michelle? What kind of nonsense is that? They have, they have that at every meeting. But why don't they, why didn't you have that? That was important.
Hold on a second, Rita, Michelle's going to answer.
Okay.
So all I, I did was merely answer the legal question, is it a legal requirement for the planning board to take public comment or have what is the statute says is a public hearing by law? They don't legally have to, but our planning board many times has opened it up to public comment. And again, I, that is at the discretion of the board chairperson and the board attorney. I'm not saying one way or other they should or they shouldn't. I'm just talking about the legal requirements. This tonight is the legal public hearing of an ordinance.
Yeah. This is a very important thing. Maybe you should go back to the planning board.
But to the best of my recollection, nobody got up and said, "Can I talk?" And they were told no. Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, it was never open to the public. I, I watched it and I thought that was, because I was waiting for that introduction, "Anybody wants to speak, open it to the public and then close it." That didn't happen at the planning board. But before I do this, I just think it's, I mean, are you going to go to something you understand? I'm just saying that, you know, right now today. I mean, it just feels like it's a little hard to understand. And also, I do believe it's a public policy decision, whether, how much you charge. Because you are either encouraging people to use electric vehicles or you're not, so.
But this isn't determin, we can determine how much we charge.
Down the road, and you can come and talk us out of it.
This isn't saying you have to charge the maximum, right?
It's just, it's casting it so you can't, so someone can't come in and charge a dollar.
And this isn't that, from the city we charge, this is something that developer would charge.
You think that we're going to like rip people off on this? I mean, we'll charge whatever's a, it's going to hold a low rate, right?
It's the clarification, it's the vendor that, that charges. The city doesn't get this money. So we're, so we can't have a vendor come in and say, "I'm going to put in five hundred free parking, um, EV spaces. I'm going to charge everyone two dollars a kilowatt." They won't be able to, they can't go more than fifty cents. And to James's point, it's about forty cents now.
And so what do we get?
You know, nothing.
Huh?
Women don't want to get anything, now you want to know how much we're getting, so I don't know. Right, right now, there is no charge.
The, the chargers, all these chargers are what developers, someone who's building a building, putting a parking garage or a parking lot, they now have requirements for EV charging spaces in those developments. And that's what this deals with. It's mostly put in place by the state. The city doesn't have a lot of play with those rules. Uh, except the only rules the city had play with were the things that were more visual and as, and informative and safety forever, uh, and implemented. So it's not that the city's putting in new chargers, not that the city is charging anything or implementing any fees. This is all things that are done by developers uh, in their new construction and buildings.
Mm-hmm. Well, and I think what Carrie was trying to say is that if you did listen to the planning board meeting, you went away blank because you didn't, I don't think anybody up there had the knowledge. And you shouldn't have a meeting like that unless you know what you're talking about. Really? Huh?
No.
Saying exactly that to you.
And Rita.
I was encouraging them to like, meet with the green team, meet with the environmental agency connection, maybe talk to somebody who knows about this better than. I started, it's not a subject that many people are extra public.
Change.
Right, and a member of the planning board is Mr. Banana, who's a transportation planner.
Move to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-three, thirty-four is now closed. I have a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three, thirty-four.
Move it.
To adopt.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Round to ordinance twenty twenty-three, thirty-five. Ordinance of the City of Asbury Park and the County of Monmouth and the State of New Jersey authorizing the execution of a First Amendment of the amended and restated Special Assessment Agreement between the City of Asbury Park and K Hamannian's Cove at Asbury Park Urban Renewal LLC with regard to infrastructure improvements on Block thirty-eight oh one, lots one point oh one, one point oh three, and one point oh five. Uh, formerly Block thirty-two oh three, lots one through four, lots five fifteen, sixteen through nineteen, and Block thirty-two oh six, lots one through three, lot four, the Cove within the Asbury Park Waterfront Redevelopment Area. Um, we have Special Bond Counsel John Canolupo to give us a brief overview of this ordinance.
Is it on?
It's on.
Okay, great, thanks, sorry. How are you guys doing, mayor, council? Um, yeah, I know you guys have been going since three o'clock. So this is, um, we, we actually went down, it's on your, on the next ordinance, they're both basically the same thing and received local finance board approval. And then this, that's on the Ocean Club ordinance. This is on the Cove, uh, project. What happens is, is that when we originally went through the program, um, and we charged special assessments to issue the RABs on these projects so they could recoup the money that they put in, meaning they, meaning Brian and I Star, into uh, the infrastructure improvements, roads, um, sidewalks, uh, water sewer, things like that, lighting the boardwalk. Your agreement with I Star is that, um, as projects get built, special assessments get charged to the owners at some point. And then that money, uh, gets paid back. And then there, a portion of that money gets used to repay the RABs. The city always gets what they would have get, have received under conventional taxes. You guys still receive that. And then you get the new infrastructure and that gets paid for by the new residents. In this instance, you have two projects, the Cove, and we're probably going to be coming back on other ones perhaps if, if the sales still are increased. Um, the Cove and, uh, the Ocean Club both exceeded sales expectations, which is a good thing for, for you guys. But at the same time, because they exceeded sales expectations, when we issued the original redevelopment area bonds, you're, you're receiving a lot of more special assessments than you would originally receive. So, and they're paying well over what the redevelopment area bonds that we originally issued because you have.
One second. Hey, Carrie?
Carrie.
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 Okay, forget it. I just want to make sure Rita's okay.
Okay. So, okay, John, mayor, or wait a minute?
Hold on one second.
Yeah, sure.
Let's just make sure Rita's okay.
Was she fine?
Yes, she got up and.
She's fine.
Thank you.
No problem there, sorry. Um, so what happens now is, is that there's an increased amount of special assessments. And Brian and I Star still have, let's just say right now, still eighteen million dollars of unrecouped expenses that are in the ground and on the boardwalk that they haven't recruited. Because there's excess special assessments, because the prices of the homes sold for more, um, we would be issuing additional redevelopment area bonds that that money that's already being charged for would come back and secure and then pay, continue to pay them back for the amount of the investment that they've made into the ground with the infrastructure and stuff like that.